All right, so tonight we are at the regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board. Today is Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, City of Cape Coral Chamber Council. Today it is 5:30 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're gonna start with a moment of silence if we could. All right, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Present.
Long, District 6. Long. Michaels.
Present.
Minaya. Minaya. Pease.
Present.
Stout. Present.
Madam Clerk, could you please call Member Long?
Long.
Here.
All right, that gives us Quorum.
Parent representatives. Hoagland, OHS.
Here.
Shade, absent. Rousseau, absent. Soto, absent.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, before we go any further with the meeting, I'd like to remind all of our members to please turn on your microphones. We are always, myself in particular, I forget to do that very often because we always get caught up in conversation. But I know that there's a lot of people that watch these meetings from home and they never can hear what we're saying. So if we could be mindful and just turn on our mics when we're talking, I think all the people out there in virtual land would be grateful for that. So thank you. Also, I know tonight Member Pease has a prior engagement that he needs to leave at 6:00 PM for. So he will be leaving at 6:00 and we're aware of that, so thank you for letting us know. All right, so let's go on to Agenda Item A, Approval of the Minutes. We're gonna do them as presented, A through D. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve 5A.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion or anything that needed to be polled? Good, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 6. No, we did them as presented, A through D.
My motion was only for A.
It was presented as approval of minutes as presented, A through D. We are allowed to do as correct?
You were allowed to do that when the motion.
I'm sorry. So I'm gonna rephrase what my, the motion that I'm looking for, if that's okay. We're gonna approve the minutes because we have quite a few of them, because we had quite a few meetings over the last couple of months. So we're gonna do them as presented, A through D. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve Items 5A through D.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. All right, that brings us on to 6. We're gonna do the approval of the agenda of the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on agenda, meeting, minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll bring us to our public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per individual, 45 minutes total. Comment time. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to partake in public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. All right, is there anything that anybody would like to poll from consent agenda? No, any discussion on it? All right, so let's go ahead and do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve Items A through, 8A through D.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to our Superintendent's Report. Ms. Collins, please.
Good evening, Board. Jackie Collins, Superintendent. We need to discuss our mental health assistance allocation plans for all four schools. This is the reason why we move our June meeting to the very end of June. These plans are, need to be adopted by July 1st. And we are given a very small window in which to develop these plans, have them approved by Lee County, and then have the Governing Board approve them. So, let me begin. The Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan provides funding to schools in establishing and maintaining mental health care and to train educators and other staff to respond to mental health issues. So in order to receive this allocation, per school, we need to provide certain assurances to the state that we are doing the following. First of all is that we use 100% of the state funds for mental health care. Also that the curriculum and materials we use are compliant with the FDOE and Florida statutes. That our plan is approved by the Governing Board. That we collaborate with the FDOE to disseminate mental health information to students and families. That the school district reviews our plans for compliance. And that, most importantly, we provide a tiered level of support to deliver evidence-based mental health care assessment, diagnosis, intervention, treatments, and recovery services to students. Okay? So the two basic key components of our plan are our evidence-based practices. And I'll share a little bit about what those are. The first program that's evidence-based is called Building Resiliency and Supporting Emotional Wellness. This takes place in all four schools. This is basically a foundational instructional program that's worked into the standard curriculum. The program is designed to target the early identification of social, emotional, or behavioral problems or substance abuse disorders focusing on the student's abilities to provide resiliency, emotional wellness, and productive social development. So additionally, this program assists with overcoming adversity and the use of critical thinking and problem-solving to increase students' success in school and decrease concerning behaviors. Okay? It's administered, like I said, in the classroom by classroom teachers. However, if we find that students need additional support, we will also utilize small groups and individual support by the school counselors and our social worker. We are measuring this goal by hoping for a decrease in the number of visits to school teams over a year prior. The second evidence-based program that we use in all four schools is a little more in-depth, a little more intensive. It's called Cognitive Behavioral Therapy. Otherwise known as CBT, it's a problem-focused and action-oriented form of therapy. It is a short-term psychosocial intervention where students learn how their thoughts affect their actions. Students are taught to find new ways to react and to behave by changing their thought patterns. This can help students reduce stress and anxiety, cope with relationships, deal with grief, et cetera. Small group and individual therapy sessions are mostly provided by the social worker. She is now licensed to provide these therapy sessions and assessments. And we are measuring this goal through parent or teacher-reported updates. Now, when we go to a much more severe level, each school has a threat assessment team that handles severe conditions such as things like suicidal ideologies and harm to others, et cetera. Our mental health providers at each school can include, but are not limited to, parents and teachers, administration, ESE teachers, interventionists, and others as determined appropriate by the needs based on each student's need. So each school receives an allocation and has to file an expense report as to how those funds will be spent. And like I said before, 100% of funds must be expended. So depending on enrollment, each school receives between $50,000 and about $55,000. And the allocation support the social worker at 0.25% per school and a fraction of one counselor at around 50%. And all those allocations are expended. If there's anything else, any curricular programming in addition to what we've mentioned in our plan, it's basically, it comes out of operational funds. And last year, we did purchase an extended curriculum for the social worker. So does anybody have any questions about the mental health plan and what we have in place and how we are going to allocate those funds for the 24-25 school year?
Are we able to, we are able to use some of those to pay for the social worker, yes?
Correct.
And?
So she's fully funded by this allocation?
By this allocation, okay. And she's able to work through all four schools with the ratios?
Correct.
And we feel that's sufficient, the ratios?
I ask her every year, at the end of the year, if she is overwhelmed. And you know, there are certain times of the year that are worse than others. But generally, she's good at managing each school. And she's got a good threat assessment team in place at each school as well. They analyze student behaviors and elevate the need based on each student individually. So she's got a nice team at each school to help her and assist her, and guidance counselors. So, so far, we're gonna stay with one. And we'll get through next year and see where we fall. And we do find that our levels of the ability to report these more severe incidents have not increased over, from one year to the next. They've stayed about the same, maybe fallen a little bit.
So are we teaching these skills to all the students as a curriculum?
We are.
And when we see problems, that's when we're kind of pulling into smaller groups?
Yes.
And is that when the parents get involved, when it's a smaller group issue, or when do they become?
Not necessarily. Is Mary Beth, does she get parent permission when she does pull a small group? They do, okay. So we get parent permission, especially for one-on-one. But for small groups, she does as well. And I've asked her next year, especially at the elementary levels, to start pulling more small groups for students that have to deal with divorce or they're dealing with grief, death of a family member. And she's very willing to do that. When the students get older, middle school and high school, they don't want to be pulled out into small groups. They don't want to be singled out, so she tends to do more one-on-one.
And then if we have to go further and they're still continuing to be an issue and maybe they need more resources, can we use these funds to then maybe do counseling or other types of therapies, maybe at a private setting?
That's a very good question. We have always had an outside contractor on hand to do special therapy sessions if need be. Now remember, Tiffany, our social worker, has now received special certification so that she can do that, those assessments and those types of therapy sessions. So if what we're finding in-house is not working for our family, we will refer them to outside sources. But we are not paying for those resources any longer.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Ms. Collins? Thank you for that presentation.
So I'd like to make a recommendation that the Board approve the mental health assistance allocation plans for all four schools.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the request for the mental health assistance allocation for fiscal plan 24-25?
Yeah, motion to approve 9A.
And do we have a second? And do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to B.
B is the approval of the Charter School Safety and Security Requirement Compliance Checklist. Every year, we do two things. At the beginning of the year, we provide assurances that the Board signs off on, saying that we will implement these safety requirements that are mandated by law. And then at the end of the school year, you sign off on the checklist that shows that we are in compliance with all of these mandates. And there are several of them. So very quickly, I'm just going to run through the gist of what you will be approving this evening. And that, these are the items that we are in compliance with. The fact that every school has at least one safety resource officer. That we submit an FSSAT tool, which is a safe school assessment tool, every year to the DOE. We participate in online CESSAR training for severe issues, reporting issues. We employ the Fortify Florida app. We train students as to how to use the app. And we install it on all mobile devices and Chromebooks. That is the anonymous reporting tool. We have active assailant and shooter response plans. We have emergency response plans. And we have trained at least 80% of our school personnel on youth mental health awareness training. In addition, we are stating that we are compliant with the development of a threat assessment team at all four schools. That those teams have had required training, conducted team meetings, and utilized behavioral threat assessment instruments developed by the Office of Safe Schools. We have a mobile panic alert system that we wear around our necks called Syntegix. We also guarantee that when a student transfers out of our school system into another school system, our file of intervention services follows that child until the new school can evaluate and pick up the services. We practice safety drills annually, should be monthly, excuse me. We submit an annual report of involuntary examinations initiated at our school, which would mean a Baker Act, something along those lines. We have a mental health allocation plan that you just approved that offers multi-tiered systems of support for students. We have a code of conduct in place. We copy Lee County's. We have a family reunification plan in place in case we need it. And we also have school policies and procedures written to address health, safety, and welfare of students. Does anybody have any questions about the compliance checklist?
Before we do actually ask questions, I just want to keep the Board aware that a lot of stuff we're discussing is safety of our students. And we don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of how we do a lot of these things. That's something that would take place at maybe a Shade meeting or maybe a personal conversation with Ms. Collins. So if we are going to ask questions, please just keep them general in nature so that we're not getting into details. That being said, please, questions, feel free.
There is one thing I wanted to add. Thank you for reminding me. There is a blank. Number 3 says the school has conducted a first responder law enforcement agency tour of the site. Should happen once every three years. We left that blank because in September, the City Council has approved that we do a CPTED security assessment by a hired security contractor. And the city will be paying that bill for us to a tune of about $63,000. So we are still within compliance issues. We do a walkthrough with our SROs every year. We get feedback from them as to areas of weakness, areas of strength, what we should improve upon. But this is going to be a big walkthrough that's going to take several several months to put together, and then a presentation will be made to the Board. I believe, if that follows safety, security protocol, that it can be done in public. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. City Superintendent, that's gonna be a Shade meeting, I presume, for the results of the findings of that study regarding the security that Madam Superintendent?
It's going to.
I know Council just did something very similar and that was held on the Shade.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then just a question on the topic at hand here. I'm going through the checklist, just sort of an operational question regarding number 9 on my material, which you had referenced this. School certified, at least 80% of school personnel have received mandatory youth. Do we just shoot for that 80% or is it higher and that's just?
We were shooting for 100%, but we have some turnover and we have some staff that we hired mid-year. And so if they weren't present for the training, they didn't get it unless they got it at their previous school system. So some did, some didn't. The bus drivers did not receive this training. So we're about 85-87%.
Okay.
School-wide.
The nature of my question, I just want to make sure that we weren't just shooting for the bare minimum and that we had a higher goal in mind. That's obviously something that's very important, so thank you, ma'am. That's it, thank you, Chair.
Of course. Do we have any other questions for Mrs. Collins on the topic? That being said, do we have a motion for Item 9B, request for approval of the Oasis Charter Schools, Lee County School District Charter School Safety and Security Requirement Compliance for 23-24?
Motion to approve Item 9B.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on the topic? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And that brings us to our City Manager's Report. We have Agenda Item 10A, the request for the approval of the Cape Coral Charter School Authority Tentative Budget, fiscal year 2025. This will be presented to us from Nicole Rittler.
Well, Mark Mason.
Mark's gonna kick it off, I guess, for us, please.
I'm something with the Charter School Authority, so liaison, we'll call it that for now. Yes, we have the request for approval of the tentative budget for the Charter School Authority. This is the, we have a couple of changes I believe that we had to make. And so we're including those items in this particular budget. And then following that, at the request of the school superintendent, as well as, you know, myself with my staff. After the first finance meeting, I believe, there was a lot of good information that came out of it. And I think the decision at the time was to share it with everybody on the Board, which I'm certainly looking forward to because this is a lot of information that I think we've tried to communicate over the last year and a half or two years. But I don't think we've actually just gotten there. So my staff did a great job in putting together the presentation you're going to see. And hopefully, it'll be certainly educational as they get done with it. So without further ado, I'm gonna bring Nicole up to talk about the budget.
Thank you, Mark. Again, Nicole Rittler, Budget Administrator for the City. Today, we're back to finalize and approve your fiscal year 2025 tentative budget. I'm gonna walk you through the final numbers that were presented to you in the second workshop a few weeks ago, as well as walk you through any changes that have occurred since that last meeting. All right, when the presentation comes up. There we go. So for fiscal year 2025, your total charter school budget is $35,171,500. This does include $669,000 going into your general reserves for future use, as well as $788,932 from additional high school revenues. That's due to the additional students that will be going into reserves pending evaluation and confirmation of that student enrollment count. The 2025 budget was developed with Ms. Collins as well as with the principals and does meet the needs of each of the schools for fiscal year 2025. Here is your overview by school, showing the breakdown by category of revenues and expenditures. You can see the detail for each school from OES, OEN, the middle school, and your high school. The total budget is balanced at $35 million. And there is $1.458 million going into reserves for future use. Changes from your second budget workshop. We did add an additional bus driver that was determined based on need. So your total FTE count is going to go from 363.25 to 364.25. We also did add in costs to manage the existing bus lease that was left out from the original chart of expenditures. So that will add an additional $206,000, taking your reserves from 906,500 to 669,568. Again, these funds have been placed into a reserve for future use. We also do have that $788,932 from the high school due to the increase in revenues from the increase in the school count. Overall, that $1.45 million will be available for allocation next year pending that class and compensation study that's currently being undergone. Overall, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions from the Board?
Ms. Collins.
Please, Ms. Collins.
Ms. Ritter, did you say on the list already, you'd be by school, I guess, the second year? Are we not putting in $1.45 million into reserves?
The total going into reserves is the $1.458,500.
And that includes $788,969?
Yes.
That, those figures are, okay, yeah, okay. So right off the top, continue to your last board.
Excuse me, Ms. Collins, is your mic on? Thank you.
Okay, so I guess my confusion is right off the top, going into 25 budget year. We are putting $1.4 into reserves before anything is expended for this school year.
Yes, we're using reserves to balance your budget. And then pending that student enrollment count, we can come back in at BA1, BA2, and adjust your expenditures depending on the needs for the schools. So you'll have that money to utilize.
Very good, thank you.
We're anticipating amending the budget, correct, once we figure out those numbers?
Yes.
Any other questions? That looks like a good scenario to me. Much better than one that we've had in the past, so.
And the Board was concerned about utilizing those dollars for teacher salaries. So those are what they're earmarked for.
And if they're in reserves, that allows us to possibly utilize them for such things as bonuses, correct?
Correct.
They won't be in pay because that would be year-over-year, but possibly bonuses?
No. These would be salary increases.
These would be salaries? I see, okay.
I have another question, Nicole, Nicole, I'm sorry. Did we? The teacher salary increase allocation is included in the FFP?
Yes, everything was accounted for for fiscal '25.
So those funds, that would be, if there's any in addition that would offset the maintenance component, those funds could also be applied to teacher salaries?
Yes, if there's any increases in the teacher allocation, we would come back in with the BA and increase your budget, and you could utilize those funds as necessary.
Is it possible to tell that we've had, do we have any leftover TSIA funding from 2024?
I don't believe so, no. I think everything was budgeted and utilized accordingly.
Thank you.
No problem.
Then, are there any questions? Do we have any other questions from the Board? Okay, so may I get a motion to approve Item 10A, the request for approval of the Charter School's tentative budget for fiscal year 2025?
Motion to approve Item 10A.
And do we have a second?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Great. And do we have any other discussion on the topic? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Of course. And that will bring us to Item 10B.
I would like to preface this conversation. This is Jen Cohen, who's going to be presenting. We had our recent finance meeting, like Mark Mason said, that Karen Michaels attended. And she thought it was, we explained how the monthly billing and reporting kind of goes hand-in-hand. And she said it was very informative and that we discovered that maybe this is, this is a great thing to present to the Board so that everybody understands how we're billed, what we're billed for, and what it looks like. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask Jen. Thank you. Jen?
Hi. Good evening, Governing Board. I'm Jennifer Cohen, the Assistant Accounting Manager for the City of Cape Coral. We have a super quick presentation on our fiscal services. Those are the services we provide the Charter School from the city, as well as the financial reporting that we do on behalf of the Charter School. So the basic city-provided services are we So the basic city provided services are, we take care of the lease of the buildings, actually, we lease them to you. That is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month, one point five million annually. The city provides security services through the SRO, as well as the security services for the board meetings like tonight. The insurance coverage for the buildings, the Charter School, the city handles the content portion only, and the city pays for the rest of the insurance, other than certain insurances that we pay, that the Charter School pays FMIT directly for. The bus debt service is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars annually, and then we also provide support services for financial, financial accounting, auditing, budget, procurement, human resources, custodial services, and IT services. This slide here shows an org chart of financial services to show you all of the different people within financial services that actually support the Charter Schools. The positions that are in yellow are all the ones that are funded directly by the Charter School, and then those that are in green are actually physically located at the Charter Schools. And for fiscal year twenty-four so far, tho, that total is seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. This chart gives you a breakdown over multiple fiscal years to show where we were when, before the transition of services, when they were provided at the Charter School, to where we are currently. For custodial services, we have a custodial supervisor, that is split fifty percent, you guys pay fifty percent for her, and the rest of her salary is picked up elsewhere. And then these are all the positions that you currently have supporting the custodial services at the Charter School. So a lot of staff. And so far this year, it's a little over, one point one million dollars has been spent for custodial. This chart shows the breakdown over the fiscal years. There's, we've run the gamut, where Charter School did it themselves, where we outsourced, and now we're back to the city providing those services. IT services, there is a network administrator that is split with the Charter School fifty percent, and then we have an IT labor rate that we utilize for all of the desktop support positions. And currently, that total is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the fiscal year so far. And then this is the breakdown of the support over the years. Any questions on the city provided services before I move on?
You have more to the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I think we do have questions. I'm sorry, I can't tell who's light on, because we have. Incorrect. Ms. Collins, I'm sorry.
I just want to make clear to the board, when you go back to the custodial service page with the graph, we had a big jump in F, between FY nineteen and twenty, but when the city took over, maintenance was also a component of this cost. So we have two, we had three, actually, maintenance people that inflated the cost a little bit. When we outsourced for custodial, it was just for custodial services, and our maintenance cost was something separate. So if you're wondering why we went up so very quickly, I think that's a factor that's considered, am I right?
Yep, yep, and those three maintenance positions were FTEs that were funded at Charter School that are now encompassed under the city.
So in other words, we had four maintenance people, they were under our salary, now we are taking their salaries, and we're, they're city employees, so the city's charging us for those people.
Do we have more questions before she moves on with the presentation? Or we'll save them until she's done? Please continue.
All right. We also provide financial reporting. We prepare the annual comprehensive financial report, that is the one that the city audited, or the contracted auditors, used to be CLA, would come and present to you, that big book that's lots of pages. It provides the basic financial statements for the Charter Schools, and a single audit. The single audit is if we have grant expenditures that are over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we will, because of our National School Lunch Program, have, be required to do another single audit this year. We also provide monthly reporting to Lee County School District as part of our charter. They are basically the same statements as the annual act for, just on a smaller basis, and they are more for each school. Now that we are a high-performing school system, we will no longer have to do these monthly, we will be able to submit them quarterly in school year twenty-four, twenty-five. And then moving forward, we're also gonna provide you guys, the Governing Board, a copy of these reports when they're submitted to Lee County. And then this is just what those reports look like. It's a basic balance sheet with our assets, liabilities, and fund balances. This is your statement of revenue expenses and changes in fund balance, which is basically an income statement, and it also will show any, any funds that have been set aside in reserves. We also do some donation and grant reports for the leadership team at Oasis. So this is an example of the donations, and how much we have spent so far, year to date, on donations, larger donations that we have received. And then this is our grants. So this is all of the grant money that we have received throughout the fiscal year for each school, and what we have available to draw from those grants, and what we have available to spend budget-wise. And I'm now gonna turn it back over to Nicole, so that she can go over some budget ones.
Thank you, Jen. Hello, everyone again. Back to budget. So as you guys know, the City of Cape Coral Financial Services Department is responsible for preparation of the Charter School budget, as well as preparation of the adopted budget book. We do have a senior analyst that is responsible primarily for the Charter School budget preparation. She works on the timeline each year, she develops that timeline, works with the principals and the superintendent to set deadlines, meet the goals, and make sure that a structurally balanced budget has been provided for approval from the board. One of the key priorities we've been focusing on over the last year is what to present to the principals, to the superintendent for review each month. We utilize Tyler Munis, it is a software that holds all of our accounting and budgetary information. Unfortunately, it is not end-user friendly. For those of us that work in it every day, we're very aware that our revenues are gonna show up as negatives, and it's easy for us to follow, but when a report splits out of the system, it's very difficult for somebody on the other end that's used to working with students and focusing on other things to look at the report and see these negative signs, and really be able to follow what's going on with their school, what their day-to-day spending looks like. So we've been working on developing these monthly reports that pulls in all of the categories of revenues and expenditures. We have the reports pulled all together with all four schools, as broke, well, as broken out by school individually. As you can see, this is kind of an example of what our June monthly reports would look like. It pulls in each category for our revenues and expenditures. It looks at our revised budget, any actuals, it pulls in the encumbrances that may be currently sitting in the system, as well as what is currently available. This takes all that information from the system, turns those negatives to positives, and gives the principals and Ms. Collins a good number to look at to really see where they currently stand month over month. So we take those overall summary reports, and then we also have ones broken down by school. So each school will also receive a report that highlights just their financials. So each principal can go in and look at that high-level summary, but then we do also provide them with the data that comes right from the system, so they can see that budget line item detail. They have the ability to click and drill down into this information, see what actual expenditures may have been charged into it, and they have real-life data that they can utilize to make decisions and move forward with. This is also an extremely helpful tool, we're hoping, as they move forward in the budget process. By the end of the year, when we get back to circling around to our timeline, they can take a look at these reports and really see where they spent their budget dollars for the year, how they need to plan better for upcoming future years. Overall, that's the goal of these reports, is to assist the principals, assist Ms. Collins in being able to prepare their budgets better each year. Any questions?
Before we actually delve into some questions, I'd like to start by thanking Mark and his team, especially Nicole and Jen, and everybody else involved. I know a great deal of time and effort went into preparing all of this. You went above and beyond, I know you're dealing with many other facets of the city, so we do appreciate all the time and effort that you put into this, and it did not go unnoticed, and it's certainly recognized. So thank you for all the hard work that you did on preparing this for us, because a more educated and, you know, informed board, we could definitely make more educated decisions, and that's only gonna come with this information that you're providing, so thank you for doing it. Let's open up for some discussions, please, so. We're definitely gonna rely on you for sure, because I know you've been sitting on some of these meetings, so your take is definitely gonna be important to us.
Yes, so as Superintendent Collins mentioned, I did sit in on the meeting, and the information that you just saw, excuse me, was essentially just a summary of what we talked about. We asked a lot of questions about, well, if that's, you know, an employee that's part of their time is spent working for the schools and part is spent working in the cities, how are you determining that hourly rate, how are you charging? And it is an extremely thorough process that is, you know, charges a specific rate, it is audited, double-checked, they went through all of the details on how all of these different services are provided and then charged to the school. It was very enlightening, they are dotting every I and crossing every T. It was really, I thought it was just fantastic to actually see all the details that they're doing, what they're looking at, very well explained to all of us. And so the summary is just a summary of what we talked about, we were there for, I don't know, almost two hours, I think. It was, it was very well done, I thank the city so much for all the things they're doing. I really appreciated that education and understanding of what they're looking at, and before it felt like, just sort of like, these magical numbers, and it's not. It is not magical numbers, it is very, very well thought out and very detailed.
Now, I know that, it's kind of a question for you as well, just a discussion topic maybe, but I know that a lot of, it appears that many of our services have increased. Are we, is it financially sound, are we receiving the services that we are paying for? Is this where we should be headed, is this the direction that we should be sticking to? And this is also a question for Mrs. Collins as well.
Sure. Do you mean versus outsourcing a specific area to a third party instead of utilizing the cities?
Correct.
Yeah. In all the information that we received, I think the best way for me to summarize is we're getting a great deal. I mean, I feel like that there are areas where we're probably not even being fully charged for some of the services that we're receiving. The city's being very mindful about only really charging us costs that we, they need to be charging us for these services. I think that if we RFP'd and went out and to a third party, we would find that we would pay more for those services. And so I think we're getting a great deal, I think the city's being very thoughtful and thorough about it. So I didn't leave that meeting thinking that we should be looking at alternate sources for these services.
And as a finance committee chair, I think that your insight is extremely valuable, and helping at least me, you know, decide and look at this in, with, in a different light. So I thank you for sitting on those meetings and making sense of all these numbers for us as well, because when the boards are reassured that the services we're receiving are at par, and we're, you know, receiving the services that our students deserve and need, it helps us make those decisions, so thank you for that, for sure.
Yeah, definitely, I definitely feel like the city has the best interest of the school at heart with all of this.
And I pose the same question to Mrs. Collins, who's actually in the trenches and, you know, seeing the services provided, you know, since we've had the city take over the services, and now that we've seen some of the numbers, what's your thoughts on it?
I, I just think about IT in particular, we've probably doubled our IT costs since the time when we did it by ourselves, but we are in such better safety and security positioning, and all the services that we get, we've never been in such a great position. And I don't see how we could have that kind of, that, that, that kind of programming if we went outside. So, yes, things are expensive, I think the biggest problem for, for us in the school system was that their processes are lengthy. It was new, getting used to how those processes work, like procurement, it's lengthy, we all know that. But I feel like we're in very good hands, if we were ever audited, if we were ever, you know, I think audits and lawsuits, and I think I can very safely say that I don't have to worry about these departments at all. I'm very happy with the financial services that we receive, they're always there to answer our questions, always.
There's a lot to be said for peace of mind.
Mark Mason is very expensive, and he answers my phone calls every time I call him. So I'm very pleased.
And then one other point quickly, that, there was a little bit of discussion of maintenance, for example, and so, again, the city is extremely receptive, if we have a problem, call immediately, you know, they, they want it, they want everything to go well as, as, as we do. And then discussion of, you know, will we have extra funds potentially, after considering salary increases and other things, you know, do we need to hire additional janitorial or anything? So the, the city is there to help us determine if we have enough money to do it, and, and if the services are needed, so that was also a great discussion.
Great. You know, I think that we were, you know, we expected growing pains and learning curves, which we've experienced. The city's a bureaucracy, when we had our own services, they were at our beck and call, so we had different expectations, but, you know, listening to the boots on the ground and the people in the trenches is really who we should be listening to, right? They're the ones who have to deal with this, so I think we should be heeding their advice, of course. I think that maybe some of the services maybe aren't as quick as we may need them for our students' sake, but I think that there's remedies to that without skirting around the city as well. Maybe that is just having a maintenance, a groundskeeper that's dedicated just to the school, right? That we pay separately, that's just there for groundskeeping, things like that, and that's something definitely we could, you know, discuss with the city and see if something's there too, so I think that.
I think the most important thing to consider is that we are, we, we do not pay for certain, we get the benefit without paying for certain services. So when I said Mark Mason was expensive, I heard him back there, he said they don't pay for me, is what he said. But we, we get to utilize the city's resources.
Sure.
And that's, that's a huge benefit for our system.
Okay. So I think that, you know, there was a disconnect for a while.
Yes.
On what we felt. It's, it's hard for me to speak for the board, but I think there was a common thought of, you know, what were we receiving versus what we, you know, were we better off receiving our own services? And thanks to the hard work of the Finance Department and the city, I think that that question has been answered, so thank you so much for that. Do you have any further discussions or questions? Yeah, please?
Couple of things, I, I don't know how expensive I am, but actually, you don't, I'm not charged for you, so you don't pay for me, so. I'm, I'm here to, you know, to, to support the Charter School system, that's what I do, and, and my staff, clearly based upon your comments, are doing the job that I've, you know, we've basically been talking about for a couple of two, three years. So I'm glad you were able to see what they actually do, and, and I think that's a good thing. If necessary, we'll do this again, so the rest of the board can actually see it. But I think, as I was just thinking about it, I think I'm gonna bring our procurement folks in here to kind of give you a little, you know, overview of what it takes to actually purchase stuff in the state of Florida, and the, and the city of Cape Coral. So it's, it's important, we, there's a lot of laws that we have to follow for purchasing here, so. All right, but thank you very much for your time, and thank you for listening to us. We thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. So actually, I don't think we actually voted on ten B, correct? So we're gonna circle back around to that. We don't, no, we don't, I'm sorry, yeah? Not a voteable, nope. That is going to bring us over to, did, did I hit everybody that had their, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna pile on real briefly and thank Mark and the staff, I think it was great, I think, Mr. Chair, the way that you described it as, as a disconnect there for a little bit, and so sometimes borderline adversarial, and so it's, it's nice to see, and let everyone else see the true benefits. else see the true benefit that's received by this board and the school system from the city, and, and further showing this board and the system that, that obviously the city is, is there for them and supports them in any way they can. So, that was my comments. Thanks again.
Appreciate it. You're under Mr. Welsh. But you might as well keep going, because now we are on your report, if you have anything.
No report, so council is currently on hiatus, so not too many happenings going on in that realm, just other than thanking you guys, I guess, for your attendance at the, the joint workshop. I, I think I speak for everyone when I, when I say that that was, was productive and something that we probably should happen, or that we should have more often than we do. So, thank you all for that, and other than that, that's, that's all for my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the chair's report. All right, so I'm going to digress for a moment, and I'm going to pass the, the mic over to Member Michaels for a moment, since her finance committee chair is actually under the chair's committee, so I'm going to let her discuss, since we haven't really had the opportunity to really do that, we haven't had the opportunity to really breathe. We've had so much going on lately, but we would love to hear what's been going on in the world of finance, please.
Sure. I will keep it quite brief, because I spoke already, and I will not continue to gush about how great the city was. The, so, I have decided at the moment to keep the committee to just myself. I'm going to attend, continue to attend the monthly finance meetings at the school. You know, perhaps the committee will end up being me and Superintendent Collins, but right now it's just me. Determine how that goes and where we think the needs are, whether I think there's a need to expand the committee, or if, if that's just enough for me to attend and report back on learnings. So, that's the current plan on how I intend to run this committee of one.
I think that is a perfect plan. It's organic, and it's exactly what it needs to be.
Sure.
Because then things will get done, and it will be followed through on, and we appreciate it, because we need that financial mind, as it relates to our board, that can come and explain things and sit in on those meetings and explain these things to us. And that was very, very valuable, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, you bet. And I would encourage the other members of the board, if you have questions that you don't understand about the budget or anything, and I can't answer them, then I will happily go find those answers and bring them back.
We will utilize you. All right, that brings me to my next topic, which is the sports complex. I'll echo Member Long. I think that, you know, bringing everybody to the table was great. We appreciate that opportunity, so please pass it along to City Council as well, your report to them. It was nice having a seat at the table and being able to discuss that. I think at the end of the day, we got accomplished what we wanted. I mean, this is monumental for us. I think this is the feather and the cap that we've all been striving for. This was a lot of moving parts, this is a lot of behind-the-scenes things that have been going on for years and years, and meetings, and a lot of attempts that have failed, so this is big. This is, this is going to make our school whole. This is going to make our waiting list 2,000 students long. This is going to be, we will then be the envy of not just Southwest Florida, but Florida, I think. So, I think that this is going to be exceptional, and I can't wait to delve into it and see what it's going to look like. And unfortunately, my kids won't reap the benefits of it, but that doesn't mean that the next generations won't, and I'm perfectly happy to see that happen and come to fruition for them. So, that being said, I think that this is exciting times for our school. Like I said, it was a long, hard fight, that a lot of people don't understand all the things that went into it, and the pieces and the behind-the-scenes, but it, it's a big deal that this got, you know, passed through and that it's going to actually happen. So, I'm very excited for the kids of our school to have that whole school experience now that they've always deserved to have, so. As far as, something that the mayor and I have discussed over the years through our various meetings was to possibly look, relook at Chapter 26. It was his suggestion that possibly we form a committee, maybe, and we look at it, refresh it. He thinks that there are new dynamics, new players involved, so maybe it's something that we start to take a look at, right? I'm not so sure right now is the time to be forming more committees and taking on new things. Like I said, since we've not even been able to breathe, and we've had so many balls up in the air, but it's something that I want to put on our radar, and maybe even for future board members to start considering. But I think it is something that we need to consider in the future, to look at Chapter 26 and start recrafting it a little bit, and working with City Council in tandem to figure out, you know, what it might look like in the future for us. Just putting that on the radar for everybody as well. And then the last thing that I want to talk about, and again, this is just a discussion, this is nothing that I would like to vote on, but I think what we would like to do as a board is preemptively create a possible resolution that we can present to City Council on a proposal on how we would like to repay the lease agreement for the full value of the debt service for the loan. I think that if we preemptively do this before it is decided for us, we would have a say in such a thing. I think that is advantageous for the board to do. I think that we need to decide what works best for everybody involved. Is this, you know, is it a three-year option, is it a five-year option? I don't know. But I think that if we could possibly have our finance committee chair possibly look into it a little bit and see what the numbers look like and what's best for us to repay this, and possibly come back at the next meeting where we can come up with a resolution that we can present to City Council, I think that, that would benefit all involved. I think City Council would be happy to have something presented to them so that they could see the numbers and see what it looks like. Because I know that our LCI funds are not going to come in right away, so repaying the full debt amount, you know, next year is probably not the best thing for us to do. But maybe it's not in five years either, which was, is also going to reopen what is the lease agreement going to look like as well. So, I want us to start possibly thinking about this, and then maybe at our next meeting, and when we have some more members here involved, we have this discussion, we have some numbers, possibly if Karen is willing to do so, and we can make a educated, rational decision that we can present to City Council in the form of a resolution that they can then vote on, because as you all remember, in the last council meeting that they voted on this, they chose option C, which was really not an option. It kind of kicked the can down the road and said, "We're not really sure what it's going to look like yet. We need more information." So, maybe if we provide that information to them, we can give them a rational decision to make and vote on. So, that's my opinion, and I would love to hear what your opinions are on that as well. Please, Ms. Michaels.
Yeah, I, I don't think, and it may be that we will warrant a discussion with our attorney, Mr. Moriarty here, and maybe others, but I don't think that the city can unilaterally change the lease. So, it's, it's 1.5 through the duration of the lease unless we agree to change that. So, I think it's really a matter of a discussion of, would we be willing to change it to something else? But they can't unilaterally change the terms of the lease and impose that on us.
But it's coming up in 2026 where they can.
Up in, is it 2026 or 2027?
26 is my...
26, yes, where they would be able to.
Yes.
And so, 2026, we, they would be able to, well, it's a renegotiation of a lease, and so we would, yeah.
And, and 2026 is not at that three-year threshold where I think our LCI funds would be at a sufficient level to maybe take on that full amount of the debt service, right?
Correct. I think that's 2028, I'm looking at the city finance people, '29, the full.
So, my worry is possibly that they look at the full amount in this 2026 lease when we're not financially ready to do so, right? So, maybe this resolution gives them the options and says, 2028, we're ready, let's do this, we're ready to pay this, we're financially sound now and able to take on this debt, which, you know, I think as a school system, now that we have these newfound funds, we should take back on, right? That's our responsibility. We have the money, it's time to start doing that, we just need to do it in a fiscally sound manner, right?
And so, maybe it's just, I don't know if we need to do a resolution in front of the city, but I think it might be more of a conversation about what that renegotiation and extension of that lease looks like.
Member Long, do we have an opinion, or?
Yeah, I always have an opinion.
I would love to hear them, please. They're valued.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, immediately, you want to go to, you know, the, the insinuation with the council was going to go full bore in one direction, and then I think we just kind of vaguely danced around, maybe tilting it in the complete opposite. So, maybe somewhere in the middle is where we should belong. You know, you talk about good faith and bad faith, or, I'm sorry, or Member Michaels can, can obviously understand that. And so, you, you want to make sure that we continue all the things that we just talked about in the last agenda item, right? All the, all the dichotomy that we had, the, the good feelings and good natured and good intentions, and so, we want to make sure that we don't, you know, cut off our noses, splat our face, and, and make sure that, that all the ancillary stuff and the services that the city does provide, that as Superintendent has stated, that maybe isn't even accounted for, in addition to the things that are, which are clearly a benefit. You want to make sure that we don't tank that in any way, that, that, that scale tips as well, as a result of maybe not being willing to come to the table and come to a resolution rather than both sides saying it's this or that.
The, the intent of, my intent at least, is, is to show a good faith effort to say to the city, like, we, we do want to pay this back, and we, we don't want to fight you on it, so, and, and we don't want you to have to make the decision, and so, it's not adversarial in any way. I, I'm really trying to go for the opposite. So, please, if you're, if you're feeling that that's how it's going to be interpreted or taken, please advise otherwise, because that's the complete opposite of what I'm trying to accomplish with this. I'm trying to give some numbers and some comparatives and say, "We would love to pay this back, we're ready to take on this responsibility, this is where we think it best fits." You know, your votes at, at the City Council as a whole meeting kind of left it up in the air, this is where we think as a board it should land. Do you agree, disagree?
Sure.
And please advise if you feel...
Yeah, no, I think, I think, and you were there, I believe, for that, for that discussion, so, you know, the way that you're describing it is sort of a kick to can, but I think you would agree that that was the best solution possible, given the circumstances of that way that discussion was going. And that allows us for an opportunity to have those discussions.
Yeah, it allows us to come to the table with some...
Yeah, and so, that was my only, but you know, sure, technically it is, you can't unilaterally make that determination, the city can't, you know, but do I think that we just say, "Well, you know, for that result, we're not going to talk until the end of it"? I don't, I don't know that that's a great idea either. And I'm, I'm not saying that's what you were suggesting, but just to make sure that we're all on the same page here, that we come to the table as was suggested and say, "Hey, look, I mean, we both understand where our positions are legally and logically, but let's try to..." Again, this is about the kids, this is about the school system, and I think we all know that that's the end goal on both sides. So, it's just getting to the, to the bottom line.
And maybe with the passes of a resolution and a presentation at the City Council meeting during your report, you can, you know, translate the sentiments of the board as well, that it's us extending the hologram, saying like, "We understand that originally we were hesitant on maybe paying it back, but now we're in a position where we're saying, we understand, let's pay it back, we have the monies, and, you know, we want to do what we shouldn't do," so.
Sure, understood.
Okay, thank you. So, again, it's just a, a conversation I wanted to start thinking about to possibly craft a resolution, and if Mrs. Michaels could possibly come back with some numbers and, and when it looks financially responsible for us to take on that full debt without really hurting any of the functions, right?
Yeah, and I think, to be clear, and I didn't mean to imply that we shouldn't talk about till 2026, I just meant there can't be a unilateral change through the term of the lease. I do think we should be talking about an amendment to the lease to deal with the additional LCI funds that could start paying for this. So, those conversations should start to take place, so that we can ultimately look at, how do we amend this lease in a mutually beneficial way over the next few years and then beyond?
So, are you willing to come to us next meeting with maybe some numbers where we think that sweet spot might be, where we can hit that full debt service amount and suggest to the city, like, this seems like the great time to, to go to the full lease amount?
Yeah, I mean, I think ultimately, the, my opinion on the board is that we should be utilizing all of the LCI funds that we ultimately receive. Like, I think our concern is paying a higher amount than that each year until we receive the value that would cover the full cost. So, and those numbers exist today, or at least the, the general estimates of what those are supposed to be over the next several years.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, so I think that is, do we have any more conversation, discussion? Okay, thank you. All right, so that's going to bring us to our foundation reports. Is, so are we going to do that first again?
Yeah, we have actually no report. We're still working during the summer on developing our budget and, and everything for next year, so we'll come back next time.
Okay. Looks like we don't have any staff comment tonight, am I correcting that?
Nope.
All right. That brings us to 15A, unfinished business.
Yes, actually, this request is for approval to ratify the purchase of software that you approved at the last board meeting. There was a typo. We asked for approval of the amount, which was $153,815.33. We were off by $2,008. So, the correct amount for approval for the software purchase is $155,823.33.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to adjust to the price of the $155,823.33?
Motion to approve item 15A.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion cares. That brings us to 16, new business. Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Chairman Jackson and members of the governing board, I have a very brief request of your time today to update our food service manager, excuse me, Amy Brown from Oasis Charter Schools Human Resources, sorry about that. I think you all know me well enough by now, but those who are listening might not. We want to update this food service manager position. We've done an analysis, Ms. Collins and I, and have determined that is not a position that needs to be utilized all 12 months of the year. So, we do want to reduce its calendar, and so, we want to strike the language in the job description. This is our only job description that actually cites how many days of the year it's scheduled to work. So, we want to strike that, and while we were doing so, we noticed a couple of typographical and grammatical errors we want to clean up as well. So, just one quick minor change to our food service manager position tonight.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the updated Charter School Authority food service manager job description and salary range?
Motion to approve item 16A.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion cares.
Thank you so much.
Okay. That brings us to our final board discussion. We'll start with Ms. Hoiberg down there. Okay, Mr. Long, please.
Thank you.
All right.
I've talked enough.
I don't know. Good, all right. Well, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Pikiolo on her promotion to Assistant Principal. I know she's not in the audience, but hopefully she's listening. If not, I'm sure we will pass her sentiments, please.
She's coming.
Oh, I just missed her then. Great. So, again, I want to thank City Finance for all the work that they did for us tonight in helping us understand, open that curtain up a little bit, and help us understand where we're at. Again, we always appreciate our partnership with the city. We appreciate our liaison from the City Council as well, passing our message along and being our advocate, as always, we do appreciate. And so, everybody, our whole Oasis team sitting out there that doesn't need to be here tonight, taking out their time, our other families, and we do appreciate it, and we see it as well, so thanks for all the players involved. Our city attorney as well, thank you, sir, we do appreciate it. That being said, our next meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, August 20th, so don't forget, next month, we are going to be here, so we get a month off. 2024, 5:30 PM, that's going to take place here in the City Council chambers at 1015 Cultural Park Boulevard at 5:30. That being said, meeting adjourned. That being said, meeting adjourned.